Right.
Okay, thank you. Today is March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It is not live, obviously, and it will be shown on Channel Nine on cable, and it will also be uploaded to YouTube. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and could we please remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention the passing of two Dyton residents, Lorraine Condey and Wesley Hathaway. And in their memory, I would ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Wesley Hathaway was a member of the Dyton Historical Society for as long as I can remember, since I moved into town. He's always been very supportive of the town, and he would always grow tomato plants for us right up until last year for our plant sale, and he will be sorely missed by the Dyton Historical Society. Good evening. There is no doubt that the COVID- nineteen pandemic has impacted us all and significantly interrupted our daily operations. Officials in the town of Dyton have held regular and continued meetings over the course of this outbreak to discuss safety measures to reduce the spread of the coronavirus and to protect our employees, particularly our police and fire department personnel. We are continually updating our town website at dyton-ma-gov via an emergency alert button at the top of the page for all developments related to our response and precautions to this pandemic. We are also continually updating the town's Facebook page and utilizing our public relations team to get word out of our actions both online and to local media sources. Bulletins are posted to the local access channel. We urge residents to continue to follow these sources to keep on top of new developments as this crisis changes by the day. Residents can also visit mass.gov for information as well. On Monday, March sixteenth, the board has selected declared a local state of emergency. The board has enacted a variety of cautionary measures so that we may do our part in preventing the spread of this highly contagious virus. Currently, our municipal staff are still working in their offices despite our decision to close our town buildings to the public. We are available via telephone and email to continue our services to the public. We apologize for this inconvenience but are doing our best to continue our public service mission despite being urged to keep our local social distance from others. Gatherings of more than twenty-five people in an indoor or outdoor confined space are prohibited. Playgrounds and other confined recreational spaces are closed until further notice. Services and programs put on by the library, counseling, aging, and primetime are currently suspended until further notice. Digital content for the library is available during this time. The schools will continue to be closed until April seventh per the governor's order. The Medal of Honor ceremony scheduled for April twenty-sixth has been canceled, and officials will consider rescheduling this later this year. The Easter egg hunt for April eleventh has also been canceled at this time, and officials are considering rescheduling later this year. Only essential meetings will be held, and when they are, we will utilize social distancing practices. As you can see, we're all six feet apart here. In the event of an essential meeting, boards are encouraged to participate remotely and conduct businesses under relaxed conditions of the open meeting law per the governor's executive order. This would include utilizing meeting platform software or conference calls capabilities. In those instances, recording of the meetings must then be posted on the website for public access. As far as we are aware, crib site trash pickup is continuing. If you or a member of your household is exhibiting symptoms, the board will health request that you either refrain from leaving your trash out or that you leave a note on your trash so the Borges Brothers workers switch their gloves and do not inadvertently spread the virus from home to home. We assure you that the town has a robust emergency preparedness committee. Another meeting of the committee is taking place tomorrow at one P. M. to discuss further steps and react to the most current updates and recommendations issued by the Department of Public Health. The town will be issuing an update to our actions and decisions. We thank the public for their patience and cooperation in our country's fate as our country faces this crisis. And on a personal note, we are Dyton. Please take care of yourself, your families, your neighbors, if you have elderly neighbors. Please get in touch with them. If you think they need anything, call them up. Don't knock on the door because we're trying to separate, you know, have no contact with people. But please take that into consideration, and we will survive this. The times are going to be difficult in the near future, and hopefully we'll get through this safely. Thank you. Other announcements. The Vettman Service Agent will be suspending his visits to the VA for the foreseeable future to the coronavirus concerns. The Town of Dyton's food bank distribution will be held next on March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, located in the lower town hall level as a drive-through. Lincoln Village Distribution is canceled. Effective April first, two thousand and twenty, the Town of Dyton will no longer accept contaminants in single-stream recycling bins, and the Dyton Historical Society has canceled their psychic fair from March twenty-eight, twenty, and will be posting a new date for that event. There is no public here, so there's no public input. And what I asked, yes?
I do have one announcement.
Okay, thank you.
To the residents of the Town of Dyton who received certified billings from Mr. Ferry and I, we have completed the first round of meeting with property owners to discuss the sidewalk easements that we need. We are not going to schedule further meetings until we see how things go relative to this virus situation. We will be working with those who we've already seen, and my request is that if you have received a certified letter from Tom Ferry and Nancy Goulart, please call my home so that we can discuss it. There are a number of people who returned the cards but have not called me, so I would appreciate a phone call if you've got that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Town administrator's report.
So much of your statement contains a bit about my update for, I don't know where the, am I supposed to look there? Sorry. What I was going to speak about and our actions for battling the coronavirus pandemic and what steps we are taking. If the public doesn't already know, we are closed to the public for our services but are trying very hard to continue some level of service. So if you communicate to us via email or phone, we are still here to assist you. If you need to drop off anything to any department, the drop box at the bottom of the hill, you can put it in there. We're checking that two to three times a day, and we will make sure it's distributed to the appropriate department that you need. We've had a lot of those questions. We are meeting tomorrow. We are constantly monitoring what the state has put out. Mostly what we're looking at now are what measures can we do to reschedule the town election, which we'll be discussing, if we need to reschedule a town meeting, if we need to poll, if we can have a town meeting before the next fiscal year, what measures will we take in? I'm considering requesting a spending freeze, but right now we don't have enough information to really go off of that. And I'm very much hoping that this three-week hiatus that the governor has instituted really does its part on flattening the curve and putting us all at less risk. So I just ask that everybody adhere to what the governor has put forward and heed that social distancing really is the way to defeat this and prevent it from expanding. I would like to just take a moment and praise our emergency preparedness group and really all town employees. They have really stepped up to the plate, open lines of communication, creative thinking, creative ways in which to continue services in this time that none of us have ever really anticipated facing. And I just want to commend everyone. The morale has been high despite kind of the craziness we're all facing, even privately and professionally. And so I just would like to really commend the team here in Dyton, and you have a great group of people working for you and a great group of residents that have really rolled with our punches as we've locked them out of our doors essentially. So just a thank you from me.
Thank you for your kind remarks there. New business. Vote on transfer request for finance committee reserve fund. I believe the first one is for election funds.
Yes. Do you, I can speak on it. Do you want to speak on it?
Um, it's just that, um, when I did my budget last year, I did not know about the early voting for the March third primary. Unfortunately, you know, I had to use money that were in the current budget, so I thought I was going to be a little shabbier than I was, but it's not bad. I think I'd be requested.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred dollars, and that's pretty much to cover the election workers. I think every other budget and the election accounts are okay. So that's what that's for.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the request to transfer one thousand five hundred dollars from the reserve fund to account one six two five one five two oh, as requested.
Second, second. Any discussion? If not, I wasn't able to say I.
Aye.
Oppose extension, the ayes have it. The second I, I don't, can I go insurance?
Yes. This is our workers' compensation. We are required to provide payroll figures, and they audited us. This was from two years ago, and we were short a little bit. We paid what we could, and now there's a remaining balance, so we are requesting a transfer of one thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars just to cover that balance.
Does the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve the request to transfer one thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars from the reserve fund to account nine one two five one seven three. Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose extension, the ayes have it. Discuss use of benefited time.
This is a carryover from our emergency meeting that we held on Monday. There now, where there's these fourteen-day quarantines imposed, and people may need to quarantine themselves, they may need to stay home for childcare because schools are out. The governor has now closed daycare starting Monday, the twenty-third. We just need to have the conversation about whether or not we are going to require employees to use paid time off, or if this would be an approved leave of absence based upon the coronavirus situation. I don't know what else to call it. Situational things that have come up. And what is the purview of the board is really while we're here. And then I can give direction as necessary.
Does the board?
I don't know if we voted on this.
We voted for this week. I didn't.
And now, so we'll.
Going forward, what is the, you know, what would you like the policy to be? A lot of towns are not requiring employees to use paid time off because they recognize that it's, we're all really in this together. Additionally, these towns are forcing closures, so it's not really the employees' decision to stay home at that point, so.
Since I made the motion at the last meeting, I would just state that I am in support of continuing what we discussed at the last meeting, which was if an employee is required to be home because of childcare duties, responsibilities, or if the town, in fact, is forced into, I'll call it, furloughing employees because of the coronavirus, my recommendation is, and I would be willing to make a motion if it's consensus, that these employees not be made to use benefited time, but they be instructed to sign up for unemployment compensation because that's what I have seen again today, listening to governors from two states and also from the mayor in Boston. My thought is that we will track any expenses, including unemployment compensation, and since we are in a state of emergency, when funding becomes available, we put in a claim to be reimbursed for all expenses related to this emergency, including unemployment compensation that we may have to pay out.
You're saying that they can take time off, they don't have to use sick time or vacation time, but they won't be getting paid, but they get unemployment benefits instead?
That's what the, that's what the recommendations have been for from, that I have seen, listening to Massachusetts and Rhode Island conferences on this. As the town administrator said, it's not, it's really not an elective thing, especially if you have to stay home because your spouse works in healthcare. Someone's got to take care of children, and now with daycare centers closing, I think we're going to see more of this. So, and again, in the past, history has been, if there is emergency declared and there are expenses involved, communities can get reimbursed. So I'm thinking this is going to happen eventually, and so we need to track expenses.
And I believe the governor's worried that we're waiting for you now.
Yes, and they can apply online, I believe. They don't even have to leave their homes.
That's right. If it matters, my recommendation is actually not to do that because we still incur a cost for paying out unemployment and processing that. And if we do go to an essential employee staffing plan, we won't have the resources to keep up with all of those claims. So my thought would be to, similar to you, keep track of the costs going out, paying sick, not sick leave, but I've been calling it an approved leave of absence. So you keep track of all that money going out and use that to recoup the expense through what we later expect to be MEMA and FEMA reimbursement. Does that make sense?
My concern is that by doing that, you're not addressing the emergency at the time. Past experience, obviously, we haven't dealt with viruses, but named hurricanes or blizzard of, you pick the year, the town, in effect, put the money out and then got reimbursed. The, the other thing, too, is depending upon, and again, we're going day to day, depending upon what happens at the state level, we may not have to put all that money out up front. That's another issue, because we aren't going to be the only community that is on a pay-as-you-go plan for unemployment compensation. I wouldn't want to jeopardize anything that might affect a future reimbursement. So I'm just thinking of past procedures, how we've, how we've handled, I'll call them emergency expenses for lack of a better term. But labor expenses for emergencies in the past would have been overtime and things like that for whether it was a blizzard or a hurricane or, so that's what it would have been, was police and, I would say, highway department expenditures.
I just think if we put our employees on. Unemployment, we're hurting them effectively, and we're making the decision to close, like it, as it's not elective. So I just would caution that.
Do you have any comment? Back to see.
I mean, I see both sides, but I want to know a little bit more. You said that that would hurt them. Can you elaborate a little bit?
So you only get two.
Hurt the employees.
It hurts the employees because you're getting two-thirds of your pay plus money for dependents, but it's not going to sustain them. And, I mean, are we talking for, do we do a furlough where it's not paid, jobs are safe and secure, but it's not paid? I just, nobody is controlling, like, no one is in control of this, right? So I don't want to, I would rather give paid time off and a allowed leave of absence to those employees that don't need to be on the front line there, like police and fire, and recoup it through reimbursement. I've not heard of any other town doing the unemployment route. I haven't specifically asked that question, but I think it would hurt an employee to have to go through the trouble of going through unemployment, unemployment claims, have the thought, am I being laid off here? And then that would kick into a whole other start of things with union employment contracts and who comes back. And I just think it opens up a bigger can of worms than we need it to be, when the idea is to get, like, the goal is to be reimbursed for it. I agree with you there, but we can still put that on our list even if we give paid time off.
What do you do if somebody runs out of benefited time?
I'm, I'm saying they don't use their benefited time, that the town is closing its administrative leave, what we've called in the past. Like, if we called a snow day, we call it administrative leave. The person would just be on, the people would be on administrative leave.
Paid administrative.
Paid administrative leave due to coronavirus.
Like, so you need to pay their full salary?
Yes, because I think that it's going to hurt them, and it.
And we have some very dedicated employees. And this, what you're suggesting, it's not costing the town more money. Yes, they would have got paid if they did work. We're not getting the work that they would be doing, I get that, but they're not going, it's not costing the town any more money if they were here working.
We can also institute remote, you know, work from home and still get the productivity coming out. We have some options. We have the capability to do that. I just think forcing people to go through the unemployment process would have some negative impacts versus, and I don't, I don't take spending the town's money lightly in this, spending municipal dollars on not receiving a product. But in this case, I think people would understand why we're making that decision.
I guess I'm concerned with putting them on unemployment, A, because they, would they be technically, like, would we expect them to be unemployed? I, I don't see.
No, I don't.
The benefit to them being out on unemployment. And to your point about the budget, yes, I mean, the budget was already approved, so they would just be getting the money that they were already, you know, that was approved by voters at, at the town meeting. I guess my next question would be to Select Mingulart's point about potential reimbursements under the state of emergency through the state. Would proceeding with the administrative leave path jeopardize that? Do you anticipate that?
I do not believe it would jeopardize. So if the governor came out this weekend and said, we're forcing a shutdown, everything shuts down. To me, we all would get paid still. It's not our decision, it's not the Town of Dyton's decision. I mean, our decision, like an employee. The Town of Dyton's decision is the governor's decision. And we would say, force shutdown of three twenty-three to whenever, and put it in as a recoupable expense. We still paid all these people out, and it's because you told us to shut down, meaning you, the governor, the governor, the state government. So I don't believe it would jeopardize at all, even.
I'm going to make a suggestion. We've got a meeting posted Wednesday night. Do you see this? I don't see anybody being furloughed between now and Wednesday night.
I, I don't know.
See, I do. So with the governor coming out today, and I don't want to scare anybody, but I'm just trying to anticipate him based upon his action through this whole thing. With the governor coming out today and suspending daycare, I, I think he is seeing that people aren't listening to the social distancing thing, and he's going to force it. So I do believe.
And quarantine.
Yeah, and like, force things to shut down. Economically, that stinks, but if we can put a handle on this, like, if I'm in his seat, if we can shut down everything for, like, three weeks, you can get a real handle on it, really start to stop it, and it's not as bad as prolonging it out for the whole summer. So.
I have another question.
I don't know that he's going to do that. I want to be clear. He has not come out and said that. That's just what I'm thinking.
Think about the upcoming meeting Wednesday night. First of all, the check that employees will get next week is the week they're working in right now.
Right now.
So that's a full week's pay.
Yes.
Okay? If nothing happens, we TP now in the next meeting. I put this on the agenda for the next meeting. Take this, as I said, day at a time, week at a time. And we know, if we can have, we can have emergency meetings, you know, I don't really want to jump either way. The only reason I mentioned unemployment is because at least two states, ours and theirs, have mentioned that. So, so we've got time to discuss it. I don't think we have to make a decision tonight. We can get more information or find out from what the governor is. In all honesty, in looking at the roster of employees in this town, the majority of people do not have small children. I would hope we wouldn't shut this, well, we can't shut the town out. That can't happen. You've still got to leave payroll. You've got to have key, key people working. And I think, as I said, a week from tomorrow, the check they receive is the money they earned this week, because we always pay within, you know, it's like four days of the end of the week. So we put it on the agenda for Wednesday. If anything comes out of the governor's office, awkwardly federal, we can schedule an emergency, an emergency meeting right away to take action on it, depending on what they're telling us.
So I agree about the week to week. I mean, I agree with that because things are changing all the time, constantly. I'm sure there's more changes happening right now that we don't know about yet. I just think Wednesday might be too late, so we can defer it till tomorrow. You're posted for tomorrow after that emergency management meeting. Maybe something will come up then, or we can just kind of keep posting. We can post you for Monday. We can just.
As we, I mean, we may have, we may schedule weekly meetings and not have them. If, if things kind of calm down.
Like, I know Wednesday is our next meeting, and it's a week away. I just feel like it's a lifetime away based upon what we've just been through, so.
But the money is, but the money's going to be there because they're already, they're already in there, all right? The money, they're working now for next week. We're going to know.
See what you're saying.
The other thing, too, is, I've been following this, I think they call it a federal stimulus package.
Yep.
They're talking about sending a check to everybody that makes less than a million dollars a year. That's a lot of checks. They haven't determined the amount of money they're going to send. The, but it did pass the Senate, which was a surprise.
This afternoon, right.
I'm sure we're bailing out the airlines, but I won't thank.
Yeah, I just think, I just think we're not right at that edge right now.
Okay.
I think we have time, of course, and I think we need more direction.
I, I think the employees need to know, though. And the other, the other thing is, we're talking about if the government shuts it down, but we're also talking about if somebody gets coronavirus. Are they going to have to use, I don't know what people have for sick time. I know they have some sick time, but I don't know how many, how much they have in the bank. Is it fair to them to keep them, like, I don't want somebody to have coronavirus and then they decide they have to come to work because they don't have the time, which is meaning that other people are going to get sick, too. So, I mean, the whole plan is to keep people away, sick people away from each other and the healthy people not to catch the virus from other people. So I, I almost, I don't think there's going to be much difference between today's meeting and tomorrow's meeting. I just would hope that we would able, be able to let our good employees, we have a lot of good employees, know that we're thinking of them and we've come up with some kind of a solution for those.
I wasn't talking tomorrow's meeting. I was talking next week.
Next month, yeah.
I agree with.
She had mentioned tomorrow's meeting.
I agree with a lot of what you said, Mr. Chairman. I do have a general question regarding the benefits of the employees. So I'm not talking about their time. I'm talking about their healthcare, dental care, vision care. Would there be any difference in their benefits package still being effective if they did what Select Mingulart is proposing versus the administrative leave that you're proposing? Because usually, in the industry, when you go out on a leave, you are, I shouldn't say you, excuse me, one is typically out on a short-term or a long-term disability, and then they, they will pay their benefits through whatever check they get from whoever's administering that plan.
So I don't know this, but I believe, so you prepay insurance a month at a time. So right now, we've, like, next, what week are we in? So next check, we're going to prepay for, for April's insurance. So if you prepay, you're covered through April if you went on unemployment, but after that, you'd go on a Cobra, I think.
No, no, there are certain rules. It's covered in chapter thirty-two A and thirty-two B. One deals with group insurance, one deals with your retirement benefits, and it's specific to the reason for you being out. You can be out on a leave of absence, that's approved, and you've used up, you're not getting any money for the employer, from the employer anymore. However, there was a clause under the retirement law, thirty-two A, there was a similar clause in the health insurance, thirty-two B, that clearly states that if you make the contribution, not the whole thing, your share, you can pay it directly to the town, and you will be covered. So those, those things kick in automatically. That's why we have to be careful in what it is we go out. If, in fact, we keep, if we have to furlough some people because of an EGOT comes down from Boston, and the employees continue to get their full pay, are they losing benefited time? Or are you saying you're going to start, are we going to pay them outside of benefited time, or are you telling them they're going to use benefited time?
Me? What I would.
The proposal we're talking about.
So my request, this, I'll just put it out here. I think because of the crisis that we're facing, I think we should allow employees to, to go out if they need to and not worry about paid time off, not worry about if they get sick, what they're going to do, and that this be an allowed leave of absence, just like they would be working. And then we allow people to remotely work if they get, a paid leave.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't, when it says using benefited time, that was my point in bringing this up. No one should be penalized and be forced to use benefited time because of the virus.
I agree, and that's how, that's how I feel personally.
That's exactly what my lawyer is doing.
So I think we're all kind of getting on the same page.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, yeah.
I like that idea because then that wouldn't, if I understand what the proposal, your proposal is, then that wouldn't affect their benefits. They would just be receiving.
It's just like they're working.
The pay they would normally be, be receiving with perhaps, depending on the position, they might be able to do work from home. So. They might be able to do work from home, um, so I think that.
I mean, I've.
And this is less of an administrative.
Burden, exactly, specifically for, um, the treasurer, who will still need to come in and process payroll. For ev- you know, our emergency personnel, they are coming in, they're act- they, they don't have a leave of absence. It doesn't exist for them. So, um, we still have some people doing work, um, and they can do it remotely.
If this agenda item, discuss use of benefited time, or worded differently, I wouldn't have raised the issue.
Sorry.
When I look at that and it says, "Discuss use of benefited time," we aren't talking use of benefited time, correct? We're talking about, uh, action the board would take to provide.
It was an option.
It was an option.
It was an option.
We could have voted to say, we're not, they're not gonna get paid unless they use vacation time, sick time, or whatever. So, I, I do understand a little bit of what the confusion might have been, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Haven't had a conversation with the town administrator, I knew what this was about, so.
Well, yeah, obviously, the open meeting law does not allow us to discuss this thing. And we did discuss it the other day, uh, and that's when I saw it again and said, I thought that we got that resolved. But no, I don't want, I don't want, if an employee is told for whatever reason, because of the virus, they will not be reporting to work or can work as best they can from home. I don't want anyone penalized, I don't want anyone forced to use sick leave, vacation time, personal time, or whatever. I don't want to hurt.
I do have a question before we vote on this. So everything, I agree with everything that you raised. Is this also going to apply, apply to an employee who may not be directly affected by the virus, but whose child is at home and other spouse is working and may need to be at home? Do we need to be that clear? Because I feel like that was what your proposal was.
I think that, well, we voted on that last time to allow somebody who was impacted by Corona, not medically, but I have a day to figure this out.
They're impacted.
They're impacted, yeah.
It's a record.
Um, so, yes, I mean, I feel that nobody should be burdened over time because of coronavirus, because it's that big of a issue right now, that it's just effectively shutting down our everything.
We're in a very unique situation, this, you know, in my lifetime, something like this hasn't happened, so this is all new to us. We may have to revisit, you know, if this is shut down and it goes on and on and on, we may have to revisit this because we can't have our annual town meeting, we gotta look at where we're gonna get money starting July first, so we may have to look at this again. But I think we ought to give some confidence to our employees, letting them know that, uh, we're, we're thinking of them and, and this is our way of resolving this. So if there's no further questions, I will entertain a motion on this. And I think we're gonna have our town administrator help us with the motion so that we get it all, we get it all correct. Because it's a.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that if any town employees are prohibited from working due to circumstances connected to the coronavirus pandemic, that they continue to receive their regular pay and that their benefited time will not be affected during that time period they are not working. It's a forced situation, that's the problem.
That's what I was just gonna say, forcibly.
Like if we could put in forcibly somewhere, but maybe, maybe you don't need that.
But it's not all, everything though, right? Because it's, well, if you want to consider, you know, this childcare issue, if that's a forced situation, then.
The other thought, I'm, like, if you elective, if you take an elected domestic travel trip right now and you come back, I don't necessarily want you in the building, because I don't really know where you've been. I don't know what, like, what you've come into contact with.
I don't think we need to use the word forced.
Yeah, okay.
I don't.
You know, let's actually, I'll wait.
No, the reason. I, I think we should be flexible, I, I really do. I think someone who is taking care of their elderly parents and just has a legitimate concern, I think that that's totally valid.
Well, that's vulnerable too.
We're not, I don't feel like we should force that individual to work, I don't, so.
That's a good example, is that, I.
Right, that's a great example, and it's a vulnerable population, because if that person becomes a carrier, their family member will have an issue, a big one.
That's why if we say they cannot report for, for circumstances connected to the virus, it covers everything.
Related to, sure, yeah. I like that.
Um.
I'm also gonna put this on every agenda during this, if we continue to meet. I'm just gonna keep this around, um, so we can change as necessary, as you indicated, okay.
May I make a statement before we, we vote? I think I second, I second that as well. I just want people, uh, who are watching to know that, as someone sitting on the other side of the table, we really do have to put, you know, the employees who service the public, who provide those services that we all rely on first. And when we make these decisions, I'll speak for myself, I think of, you know, if my family member were one of those employees, how would I make that decision? And obviously, I don't have a, a family member who works for the town, but I, I think that we are making the right decision if we do approve this. So, um, I want to thank everybody, I want to thank you for your recommendation as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Did you, did you get that, Karen?
Any town employee cannot report to work due to circumstances connected to the coronavirus and that they continue to receive.
Regular compensation. And that their, uh, benefited time, sick leave and so forth, would not be affected. You know, we may also find that, I mean, um, we may also find that somebody who has to be home because there are children may be available at another time other than the, you know, the regular base workday. And they say, hey, if you don't mind, I can come by and catch up with my stuff at this particular time or, you know, because that then gives them flexibility too. Because the, the other thing too is, as a full-time employee, you don't want to come back to a nightmare and you don't want to leave a nightmare.
Correct.
And most, and I believe employees.
That's so true.
A conscientious will say, if I can free up any time, because when my wife comes home, I can come in and do thus and so. I, it gives them options too.
That's a valid point, and I'm sure it applies to our town administrator.
Absolutely.
Who should take a vacation, but when I worked for the state, when I took a vacation, nobody did my work and I came back and there was literally piles of stuff, and it may have been the same situation for you. There wasn't somebody to cover my, my work, uh, so it's a terrible situation to be in, so.
But I will also say that when the governor declared a state of emergency or don't come into Boston because of the blizzard or whatever, we were paid. There was no, there was no, you know, it was just.
Hurricanes, whatever, we were.
Exactly, yep.
Thank you for sorting that out, I appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Well, that's tonight, now we keep it on the agenda till the next event.
Will we have more votes on that, or is that?
Yeah, I'm gonna keep it going on our agendas, just because the situation is fluid and we want to be able to respond, um, all the time to whatever the latest and greatest is, so.
Thank you.
And this is a great segue into our next item about being fluid.
Discuss town elections is the next agenda item. Do you have any information for us, Madam Clerk?
Sons of it, huh?
My email is a pocket of fluff and write, and it's from all the other three hundred and fifty clerks throughout the state that not, we really don't know, we really don't know. There has been, I have been in contact with Pat Nada's office, and Karen did fill me in right before I walked in. I spoke to Ken around four thirty to find out that bill that they filed, the Secretary of State filed a bill to give some lea- you know, some leeway to the Board of Selectmen, to the Secretary of State, to be able to cancel a town election without getting a court order, um, giving the board the direction, the power to say, "We're gonna postpone this election and we're gonna, you know, postpone it to June sixth," or something like that. All you would need is twenty days before that, you know, before June sixth, to say, "This is the new election." I've looked into, if that's the case and we were to change it, every, um, household that has a registered voter would have to be notified, and that would be deducted from the company that we use to send out the census and everything. And he told me it would cost about two thousand dollars. That being said, we're not even, we're not even there. Um, Ken told me today that they're trying to round up all the, the players at the State House to set, um, a time, and I guess to me, because there, I guess some things have to be done, could be done remotely, but some things have to be done in session, but then they had a case of one of the state workers today was, was tested positive at the State House. So that's another huge flaw, that happened this afternoon. So I think Ken told Karen, it's not even at the bill state yet, it's at the ballot state. That being said, if they can still move it pretty quickly, you know, I think, they can just get everybody together. So if that happens, that would be a good thing, if it happens before you grow up.
But do we have to make, if we have to go to court though, we have a cutoff.
Deadline is Friday.
So, yes, so I spoke with, uh, our town council and said, "What do we have to do? Are they still in session?" And he said, he, he's not concerned too much that they, he thinks that they would still act on it, yeah, out of emergency. Wellesley was the first town this year out of this pandemic. I guess their, um, election was March, so they were the first, right. So they received a court order to change their election. Um, and so we, ours is rather early, I mean, it's right outside what the current hi- I call it hiatus, what the current hiatus is, and I think it behooves us to at least try to file so that we have the flexibility, um, to change it. I don't know how you feel, I just like having options open.
So the courts are closed now though, right? But they, does our.
But he thinks that they would, we would get it through in an emergency measure, and they would see, okay, yes, their election's coming up on April eleventh, the governor is shutting us down, so, um, they would react accordingly.
So is he really closer to April eleven? Is it advanced of the voters? I mean, you're still gonna send out a notice.
That's, that's just it. So my other thing would be, I spoke to the state twice today. I have my ballots, the absentee ballots are in and the regular ballots are in. My first question was, if we do change it, do I have to, do I have to, are I need ballots? Because that's expensive, and they said, no, we can use those ballots. Second thing is, um, elected officials who are for, are up for reelection in April, it is not a concern that they would still sit in that seat until somebody new was elected or they're reelected. Um, so it's not like come April eleventh, our elected officials can no longer serve on that board or the commission, whatever it is, it doesn't happen that way. Um, they actually sit on that, on that seat until the next election. So whether it be eleventh or June, whatever, that's not an issue. She did recommend, um, Michelle Tisseneri, who is the top, this is who we speak with, she's right, she's the legal counsel to Galvin on the election side. She did tell me this morning, she said, "So send out your absentee ballots." Um, it doesn't matter if the election's April eleventh or if it's gonna be June, whatever, say June, whatever, or May, whatever the board will decide. So we probably have about thirty absentee ballots that are going out tomorrow.
Can we vote by absentee ballot? I know that's terrible work for you, but what if we just do a mail-in?
So if, if, so I have a game plan, okay?
All of us are, light bulbs have just gone off.
Um, if the board was to decide to continue and go forward with the April eleventh election, I spoke with the company who, LHS is the company that provides our ballots and number card, they're in contact with our voting machine and everything. Elections are still going forward, he said, he had one in New Hampshire yesterday, he said. There is different things you can do, okay? One thing would be, and I thought maybe about moving it to the town hall here, but it's, it's just not big enough, okay? You need six feet apart for the workers, you need six feet apart for those voting booths. I have that capability at the school. Again, you don't have twenty-five people in there at the same, at, at one time. And just my election workers and myself and Pam, the, the officers, you're talking sixteen. I would have to have someone at the door, whether it be a, a police officer or to allow only four or five people at a time in the building. Every election worker and every voter would get a pair of gloves. Every, um, voter would get their own pen. I've looked into it, for pens to get, a thousand pens, black pens and gloves, it's gonna cost me sixty-five dollars. And so as they come out, they drop their gloves and the pen.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to play, in bulk?
Yes, in bulk.
And then they're, so just throw them away after?
Right, so you, you know, it's like a hundred, it's like three dollars for a hundred pens. So you take the, use the pen on your way out, you drop it in the ballot, that type of thing. I, this is just to go forward, I want to have every precaution, because, you know, people are gonna be timid about coming out. Um, I also ought to take one of those range thermometers, we could have maybe something from the fire department there to check everybody as they're coming in, see if they have the temperature. This is, like I said, the different precautions we can take. Um, I would have to sanitize everything down before the election and as the election, like, the booth. Every time somebody voted, we'd have to wipe it down. The only concern that LHS has is sanitizer. What they found in New Hampshire, people were using sanitizer, like after, you know, every time they voted, and they were getting wet and they weren't working the machine. So we really have to be careful, you know, but there's just a lot of things we can do, but there's still the issue of how, how safe people are gonna feel. My other thing that I thought maybe people could do is if they want to vote absentee. I know they can't come into the town hall to fill out an application, but what they could do, they can email me, they can call me, and I will mail them one. You know, it might be a little bit more, you know, work, but we'll get through it. So they would request one, they can actually go, you can go online to the MassDogDog website and print one of these down. They print one of these out, they fill one of these out, mail it to me, they get the ballot in the mail. I mean, we did almost two hundred early voting ballots, you know, um, for the last election. You know, we did seventeen hundred for this presidential election four years ago. This is a thought, this is just little options if we don't, if we can't cancel or something happens and we can't cancel the election, so.
So if I could comment on this, and I don't want to get myself in trouble, stop me, town administrator, I get myself in trouble. I'm on the ballot, so this impacts the election. My, my concern is, and I'm a big fan of democracy, so I've always been hesitant to change the date of the election. However, thinking about this, I think some people aren't, who want to vote, doesn't have to be for me, it could be for the other candidate.
Right.
They may be afraid to come out and we're not gonna get a true representation. Whoever gets elected to sit in this seat the next time around should have the, the people in town being able to come out and support themselves.
That's, that's right.
April eleventh is really, I mean, schools, I suspect are gonna still be closed, they may, they may be open on April seventh. I don't think so, and I think by April eleventh, this whole coronavirus thing could get a lot worse. So I, I think we need to make a decision tonight on this. I get how it impacts me, if there was some way I could step down and, and just wait until we had an election, that's, you know, that, that may be a fair thing to, for us to consider, I don't want to do that necessarily, but, uh, I want, I want the residents in town to make their choice. And I, I think absentee ballot, for example, is that, some people aren't gonna be able to go online, some people aren't gonna, some people aren't gonna do it. I think some people are gonna be afraid to come out. I'm at, I'm at that age where I'd be concerned about my own.
I'm that age.
I think a lot of other seniors would also want to take that into consideration, would, would tell them people not to have contact with, you know, I can't see my mother nursing home, I haven't seen her in two weeks, so this impacts, you know, a, a lot of seniors. And I think people are gonna really be hesitant to come out and, and vote the way they should, they should vote, so. Did I get myself in trouble?
No.
I totally agree. My recommendation, my recommendation is to push this election until like maybe the second week in June. That would be my, my recommendation. I, because I don't think May, I still think May's too early. I still, people are still gonna be afraid to come out. Um, versus June, we might be, you know, a little more at ease, maybe things, it's gotten better, the whole situation, I don't know. But if you still get to that point, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna go to the court order before Friday and say, okay, now we've got the court order, we can cancel this and push it to June? Or are we gonna take the chance that the state, you know, um, reps and senators are gonna get together before April eleventh and we can, I think they will, I don't, I, I really can't, but then I can't, what am I saying? I mean, I.
So, the first deadline is April eleventh, in all honesty.
That's our election date.
Yeah, that's the first date we're dealing with, in all honesty. If the decision were made to do it by absentee ballot, it, there isn't sufficient time to even get that out and back again.
No.
So that's, so the April eleventh date is certainly a date in question, because even if we voted, let's do everything by absentee ballot.
You can't, you can't do that.
So that's not an option for April eleventh.
Right.
If you move it to, pick a random date, May or June, depending upon how this virus, whether it comes up and flattens and starts down, or if it keeps going, if one of those dates, May or June is picked, then maybe an absentee ballot is a better route to go, because you've got more time. But I don't think April, I think eleven, I think April eleventh is, is, I agree. I don't like changing the date, but I don't think it's gonna work, because people won't come out.
I think there are pros and cons for both, but I also think that if we're gonna move it to June, so we also, I think, are gonna have a discussion, first of all. so we also, I think, are gonna have a discussion, first of all, about whether we need to move the annual town meeting. I think that's a conversation that will have to happen. So I have concerns about moving it to June when we're already talking about moving things in June to further down the road. So I think if we're gonna move the election, which again, I see pros and cons to. I think that it should be something where we're doing what you had mentioned before, Madam Clerk, about having it be absentee, in the sense of they, they mail in their ballot, it's not in person. I think that we need to plan for the fact that there is a possibility that things may not be better. I think we all wish it will be better, but I think the reality of viruses and epidemiology is that sometimes things don't get better. So I don't think we should proceed under the guise of things will be better in June because they may not be. So I think we need to keep that in the back of our mind.
The thing to remember too is the law does not allow this board or myself to tell the people in this town, we're gonna vote by absentee only. You, we cannot do that. It's just that we can't change the election date because we didn't meet the date, you know, the court order date Friday, and we, you know, state did not meet to approve that, that bill.
Then April 11th is our day. That's it.
April 11th is our day. The thing would just be to tell the people, this is the day, but if you don't wanna go to the polls, you can vote absentee. We cannot say to them, we're voting only by absentee. It's against the law.
Which is why, which is why I just think we need to keep, because I agree with everything that Chairman Pacheco said and everything Selectmen Luau said. But I think we also need to proceed with the thought that April 11th may be the best situation in terms of the public health crisis. It may, it may, it could be worse further down the line. So I just think, just keep that in the, in your mind as well. I really don't have an opinion strongly in either keeping it or moving it because I really do see pros and cons in either direction.
May, I have that question about.
If, if, if we had to move, I agree with you about June. I don't like that because we got town meeting. And that's where basically we get approval for July 1st. So just, just as an option, if by any chance it has to be moved, how do you feel about May? Actually, either one of you, if you think May is a potential, but not go beyond a date in May, I, I, I don't know.
That's fine indeed, but we can't even do that without deciding, are you gonna do the court order?
So today is the decision for a court order.
I think we should do the court order. I don't think that's controversial, in my opinion.
It only gives us flexibility, yeah.
To moving it and keeping it, but if we are running up to, what, 20 days out to the election we need to decide, then we should at least get something in.
If, if you do the court order.
We don't wanna miss the window.
You do the court order, then you would have to pick a date 20 days before that election date. So if you're gonna do it May 15th, you've gotta put that date 20 days prior.
So when, so not only do we need to decide to do the court order.
20 days before the new election date. That's what they told me.
So we need to decide the court order and the date, or just the court order?
So Matt seemed to think we had some flexibility on the date and we could just say, we're looking for a court order to move our.
I'm hoping we have flexibility on the date.
They told me no. I think Matt better call the state because I called them twice.
So he, well, he told me that if we did like within 90 days. But I don't really want to roll the dice on that specifically because this might be our only chance. If the courts are only gonna vote on us once, you know what I mean? So, not vote, excuse me, but make the decision. I have a question about the process for absentee ballot. There's not enough time because it would take, educating the public that the absentee ballots are available, I just wanna make sure I have this right. They send in their requests for absentee, then you send it to them, they vote and then send it back. And there's not enough time for that process to take place between now and April 11th?
And let people know that that's.
Right, and tell us that that's gonna be a preferred measure.
People know they can vote absentee, and we turn it around pretty quickly. I mean, but a lot of people just come by. I think people like coming up to the polls. You know, you have the same people that vote absentee all the time. It's the elderly that, you know, can't leave to go to the polls, it's your college students. There was 15 college absentee ballots today. I called them and said, okay, are you at school and, or do you want to go to your home? So, you know, all from their home. But it's pretty much the same people. They're gonna be away on vacation, they're down in Florida, or they're, it's the elderly or college students, pretty much the same people.
But I think it would increase in this situation, I think it's an, an added option that you can still participate in this election. Let me tell you about absentee ballots. And if we picked a date tonight in May, you could have plenty of time to notify the public about absentee ballots, discuss its advantages. It's not saying that it's the only way, and I just wanna praise your creativity and figure out how to make this work. That's exactly what I was talking about in my beginning remarks. So I would, my, if it were me, I think my suggestion would be, let's do a court order, let's ask for a date in May. Let's promote absentee ballot and, and the ability to do that. And also do the six feet apart, you know, we're gonna limit how many people can come in here. Your point is very valid though about it gets worse before it gets better potentially, and if it's May too far away, I don't know.
If, and I think we need the court order, so let's assume we get the court order. Are we then bound to change the date? We don't have flexibility and say, you know what, April 11th is better.
As soon as that court order completely, let's pick a day, I need to notify the state. The state needs a court order.
All right, the other thing too is, so we get a court order and we pick a date. Let's say it's sometime in May, and then the legislature acts. Will that affect what we picked as a date?
Well, we can, we can go back to the court and say, due to this new information of the legislature acting.
My, my, my hope was that they would act on this bill, like this.
Now, yes.
So we pick a, say we pick a date in May and then they pass this legislation, we can, that would allow the board to change the date without going to court, is that right?
Right. So what right now that legislation says, anybody having an election, election between now and May 1st can postpone that election by the board of selectmen taking a vote to, you know what I'm saying? To pick another date at least 20 days before that election date.
Can I ask you a question? So two, I have two questions, so I.
This is my change, this is the bill.
So that being said, did the state, when you spoke to them, I know you spoke to them several times. When you spoke to them, did they say, I know one town had apparently got a court order to postpone or move the date, excuse me, of their annual town election? Were there other, are there a lot of other towns that are doing that? Do they have a recommendation?
I, I put a call into Wesley, there was no answer. I don't know, I don't know. But the only one that I, the gentleman I spoke to LHS told me he thought Wesley and Noy, I put calls out to those two. I don't know if there's others, there might be. I can check tomorrow morning, but that still doesn't help us today. You know what I'm saying? So that court, that court order cancels, that postpones, it cancels that town election. And then, you know, then we'll have to pick another one, we'll have to pick another date, and then I have to put that into the state computer. But I also have to notify the state, because every time, every time the board says, we're gonna have a town meeting, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a town election, the town election is made by our, by our, so that's fine. But that goes into the state computer. You have to put in that event into the state, and then everything flows after that. You know, your warrant, all this different stuff.
But I guess my question is, is the state recommending, like has Mass Department of Public Health recommended putting off the?
No, no, I asked them that today.
So it's all just kind of.
Yeah, they're, they're, the only thing they said is, because one town clerk said, well, I'm gonna, we're gonna maybe have everybody vote absentee. And they said, most definitely, they, they cannot do that.
So can I, I, last question, I promise, and then we'll, we can proceed. If the board does the court order, we decide for a date in May, and then before whatever date we decide, there is some sort of order from the governor to shelter in place and then we can't have an election, right? I guess that would be worst case scenario, like what happens in a, in a case like that?
I think that's a whole different ballgame.
But I feel like that could totally.
It could totally happen. This is our, this is our big problem.
And then we can't have any election.
Right, but that would be a scenario that the governor says, no. Right now, the state government, they're not saying cancel your elections, they're not saying change your elections, don't postpone. They're just saying, if you wanna postpone, you've gotta do a court order 20 days before the election date. And then when I spoke to them yesterday, they said, Sue, your date would be Saturday, Sunday, 20 days, it's Saturday. So I, I said, well, Saturday, Sunday, of course, I hope on Saturday, Sunday, so that's on Friday.
I guess to your point, Mr. Chairman, again, I agree with both. I see merit in postponing and keeping it, but I honestly think if we keep it for April 11th, that we're really gonna not have a good turnout. And so I think we need to, because we cannot predict the future, we do not know what's gonna happen. I do think we need to decide if we're gonna roll the dice, and I kinda feel like we should, and, and try to have some later date. I do not have a date in mind. We can flush that out, but I think that.
You don't have to pick that date now, I mean, you can.
True, true. I just feel like if we do it April 11th, there's gonna be a very low turnout. People don't wanna come out right now.
Not only that, a lot of our, and we have great workers.
I was just gonna say that.
A lot of them are seniors, like myself, so I'm not picking on them, but seniors, and they would, could be impacted by this, somebody comes in.
Would they be working?
Well, that's right.
If, so, let's take it again, step by step. We get the court order and we set a date in May. Before we get to that date in May, something else happens that makes the situation more dire. And the state says, you gotta, whatever. Does the court order that we get to change the date allow us to make another change? You're gonna go back again?
This court, this court date is the way I understand it, and I didn't get too much into it, other than the state saying, that court date, that court order just cancels your April 11th election.
But I believe you have to tell them what your plan, I mean, you can't just not have an election, right? So I think, and then you have to tell them when or give them some sort of guideline. But if, so my thing is, once you do the court order, say we, we have to react because the governor shut down. So if we do the court order, we change it to the first Saturday in May, and then at that time, we're all on lockdown because things have gotten worse, then we go back to court and say, we need to change again. My understanding, yeah. It's a lifetime appointment, you didn't realize. My understanding is, it's just filing a motion.
Unless, unless that bill passes, then you wouldn't have to go back to the court.
Right, and we would withdraw our motion.
We have no, I just feel like that's great, like we, we've put hopes in a lot of great legislation we hoped would pass. But I don't think that we should, this board should make decisions like, with thinking that that will happen.
It's just very disappointing. It's disappointing because this bill was filed a week ago Monday, not this Monday, a week ago Monday. And I understand they're not there and this and that. I know they're doing a lot of stuff, local calls, I don't know what they're doing. But it's just, this is really serious. Because there's a lot of elections happening in March because Titans don't win March 31st because of Sean O'Connell to.
State rep proposition.
State rep, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of elections, I think you gotta find more cities and towns doing the court order.
Are we keeping that one, Madam Clerk? That one's still on, March 31st?
I believe they're gonna file a court order.
Okay, so I, do we agree on that, everyone?
Mr. Chairman, again, step at a time. I'm gonna make a motion that re, through council, request a court order that will allow board of selectmen to change the date for the annual election.
Second.
Should we be just voting on that, or should we also be picking the date? Should that be part of the motion?
We could do that as a second.
A second motion, I was just gonna suggest that.
Any further discussion? I do have a question. I think you answered, but am I able to vote on this?
I'm not 100% positive, but you know, maybe choosing. I'm not positive.
Yep, no.
Better safe than sorry though, better safe than sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, I abstain, the ayes have it. I'll entertain a second motion.
I'm gonna get my calendar out. Sue, you got any thoughts?
Just look at your phone.
Mr. Chairman.
No, 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 my little book is better.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. So typically, actually, before I make my motion, one last question to you, Madam Clerk. So the election, annual town election is pretty much held the first or second Saturday of every year. So do you.
It's the second Saturday after the first Monday in April. How does that affect?
Oh, that's right, you're right.
Court order would overrule it. Plus, we have the ability, I mean, obviously, there's reason to do it. We're not just, yeah. We're not just deciding, you know what, we don't feel like it.
So would anyone be okay with potentially, if we followed that rule for May, it would be May 9th? Saturday, May 9th, is that correct?
Yes. What, what are your feelings on that?
Um, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I mean, I prefer May because I've got a town meeting in June. It's a lot to do all within a week and two.
That's what I'm trying to know.
You know, I mean, because you're votersless and, I mean, that's, that would be, that's good for me because it still gives me enough time for, you know, it'd be another, I'll have to prepare another warrant, you know, because you guys sent another warrant. So, yeah, I mean, that works for me.
How do the checkers work, Madam Clerk? Do, before an election or before a, a meeting where you might need counters and checkers, do you have a sense of how many people wanna do it? And I guess my other question would be, if, given the public health situation, do you anticipate checkers coming out in May for an election and also wanting to come out three weeks later if we kept the annual town meeting the same date?
Yeah, that's not a problem. They would come out, wouldn't be kept. My dilemma, my, my concern is, is they're not gonna wanna come out most, you know, at all.
That's my concern.
They're a vulnerable population.
That being said, we've already had some conversations at the town hall and all the wonderful employees at the town hall, a lot who have stepped up and said that they would, would work for me. They would come and do the election.
That's awesome. Amazing employees.
I already recruited.
You have some good luck.
I, of course, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give them the call and give them, you know, the option because they are my election workers. They are my election workers, but everybody's pretty much already said that I can help out, my daughter can help out. As long as you're a registered voter in the state of Massachusetts, you can do it, that type of thing. I, I am concerned about the elderly coming out. There's a lot of them have health issues. I have, I have a couple that have major health issues, but they were there like troopers for that March 3rd election, you know? And I was like worried about them, this is a long day. It's a, almost a 14, 15 hour day for them. But I think they're very scared, you know, a couple that I've talked to, I think I'll have a lot that'll say no. But that doesn't mean I can't get through it, you know, we'll get through it.
So you, before we make a motion and vote, do you anticipate, in terms of your function, your office's function, the clerk's office, May, Saturday, May 9th for the annual town election tentative date is okay?
That's fine. That's fine. It works.
I'm gonna let our legal scholar on the board make the motion.
They always stick you with the hard ones. Whenever it's a difficult one, you're called upon.
David Kay's office here.
The legal scholar, the legal scholar in the room, please. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we establish a new date for the annual town election to be Saturday, May the 9th, 2012.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, I abstain, the ayes have it.
The first election on a Saturday after Cinco de Mayo, historic.
I never thought I would listen to something like this.
I know.
You know, and I just pray that we get through this sooner than later.
Her on the side of caution, so good job.
We'll get through this.
Day at a time.
Thank you so much.
And in solidarity.
Everybody's helped on this, and we're like, so we'll get through it. We definitely will. And if something happens before May 9th, we'll, we'll meet again.
So I also have to say thank you for letting me know about the proposal, it's the proposed legislation from the Secretary of State because I had, I had told my counterparts and in my manager's meeting and they didn't know about it. So, no, we were not getting that kind of information, so I appreciate that very much. And you helped a lot of other communities inadvertently.
I think it was on Facebook.
They need to support, they need to support a lot of, you know, flexibility, you do the power to, to, to do certain things, you know, really. So I think they need to do that. I mean, we're in a situation where, you know, it's.
Necessary.
Each town knows what's best for the town, so.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for your guidance on this very important issue here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. So we're going to review the budgets. Maybe, I would entertain a motion to maybe go to 422?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Madam Clerk.
Department 422 is staying as far away as possible.
Everybody had an opportunity to look at the budget?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Are there any questions, or any concerns? The superintendent's salary is, it says two and a half percent, but there was some error, according to this?
There was error in this current fiscal budget, so if that's a two and a half percent increase over the FY '20 voted upon figure, then that would be an erroneous figure, because, um, for whatever reason, um, this budget, so the highway superintendent's salary is split between two different budgets, and the increase went into one budget, and not this one, and, um, we just have to sort that out, and I have a note, that's a note for myself, to verify that the salary figure is correct.
So-
But again, I didn't know what you were doing with salaries either, so. So begrudgingly coming up here.
Based on a discussion about the evaluations, how does this work into this?
Um, I was actually going to, at another meeting, this is a special meeting, so I didn't wanna bring it up here.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
But, but bring that back to the table, because-
Okay.
Um, there's been some developments there, and then I did do those calculations that you requested at the last meeting, and forwarded those to you, so, um, more on that to come.
Okay, so, we can act on, other than line 5105, we can look at the rest of the budget?
That makes sense, yep.
The nineteen point three, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the, so line 5107, um, clerical, that, so there's a, a proposed nineteen percent increase, so I assume that is for the part-time position that we fill?
Is she getting more hours, or?
No, let's just make an adjustment for what she actually gets paid for the actual time she's here, for the full calendar year, this could be the first year cycle.
Correct, that's why I see it.
All right, okay, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, that makes sense.
So, it's not an increase in salary of ninety percent, we are now budgeting for a full year?
Yeah, and she's also split between the 432 and the 422.
How is everything working?
Excellent answer.
Good, very, very well.
She's whipped it into shape, huh?
Mm-hmm.
She's whipped it, who, I mean, what?
Yeah, I said it.
Any other questions regarding this budget?
No, Mr. Chairman, not from me.
I'll entertain a motion then, if there's no other questions.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I will make a motion that we approve the Highway Department budget as presented, with the exception of line 5105, that we will revisit.
Second.
Coming back over here. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Do you have another item on this agenda?
Yeah.
Are you here for sewer as well?
We have, I, the bridge is underneath, and stormwater, and also stormwater.
So, we've done all of those.
We did 423, 422.
Yes, yes.
We did 4291.
4291?
March 11th, we passed it, and 429, we passed on March 11th, and 432, we passed on, uh, March 11th also.
We haven't, we haven't done sewer enterprise.
Next time.
You're not the chairman?
I'm the president.
It's like a senate seat now.
And what about that hotbed of contention, 294, is that you?
294.
That's not on the agenda tonight, though.
No, I'm just wondering, are you for real?
Oh, forestry.
Position?
Which one's that?
Forestry, tree, tree warden.
No.
Is it a three-year term?
Uh, it could be five.
Oh, okay, we just thought that might be a hotbed of contention again, that's all.
So, I have a note, I'll have to double check, but I have a note that you voted on this in January, and I'll just double check that.
Voted on what, no?
This budget, 294.
Yes, the, the one, one may be a three, we changed it from one to a three, because that was more of a nuisance for the election than the term.
Because you would've, you would've set this as a request, so you have a handful of those, aside from 122 that you need to revisit, which is Board of Selectmen, um, but, we, Sailor of Ways and Measures, you set, um, town reports, town meetings, moderator, you had voted on those in January to request them.
I don't have a note that we did, we act, forestry actually is two items, tree warden and insect pest control, both titles which you hold.
Right.
That's what that budget is. I don't have a note that we did act on it, does anybody?
So, I'll just bring that, I, you had put this together, this was your request, so if you want me to bring those back in, we can, I just, if you already voted on them in January, I wasn't-
I don't have a note here myself, that, uh-
No, I, I just, what I was going down my list, I noticed-
I didn't write it down.
Well, you wouldn't have, because you would've voted on it before you had the budget books.
Correct.
You voted it as a budget request, I took that, put your, you know, put the budget together, and then we made these books, so you wouldn't have a note on that.
But, to their point, we did do it as a budget request, but does that count towards approving the actual budget?
Right, so I actually need to know the answer to that, for a lot of different reasons.
Oh, we have to answer that, okay, oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
I think, I think we should vote on it separately, I mean, you know, yeah, the budget request was put in-
Sure.
But it is a, a department, or, you know-
I think it's more of a formality, I don't think that these, the, these particular budgets we're speaking about are either, have been increases-
They don't.
Or are very controversial, so I, I suspect that it, it will be, uh-
Well, that's why I was, my thought, just, I guess to explain, I'm not trying to keep anything from anybody, um, but if you voted on the department request, I took that, that that's what you deemed should be in the budget, and I didn't put it back in front of you, but we will, with the rest of them.
Yes, so we can't vote on those tonight, they're not on the agenda, but, uh, perhaps the next meeting.
My order remains, and that, quite sure, she's talking about, that's fine, inspecting pest control, although they might be inspecting with that, so you either need to remove me off of that, or take the specimen away.
Why? Are you not the pest control?
You can't pay me for two things.
One of them's elected.
Yeah, just, pest control's not.
That is right, that's how our-
What position do you, oh, okay, because you're superintendent of the streets.
Right.
There's a figure in here for FY '20, do you just not take it?
Maybe more fitting, but I can't speak for Todd, but that'd be more fitting to go with Todd anyways.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a little note here that says, remove with a question, question mark, and then we'll talk about that next meeting.
Yeah, we can talk about that next meeting, but I think the last thing that Mr. Ferry said makes a lot of sense, so, um, remind us of that next week, town, uh, Madam Administrator.
But if it's a separate job for him, it's the same circumstance.
Right, so it would be in his-
You still have dial value, the, the purpose of that person is to have a contact person, if a call comes into the Town Hall, we need to forward that call.
Okay, so you're saying you-
I, I can do it, and, and may involve Todd anyways.
Okay, so, are you saying you would, you would be willing to continue to do it, but remove the salary, it's like a hundred ninety-five dollars?
Correct.
A hundred ninety-nine dollars?
Correct.
I just wanna make it known that you have not received pay, just so everyone knows, you have not received pay for this year, nor the previous two years, so it's not like anything's happening.
Good.
So, so for, when we do vote on this, all right, your recommendation is that you leave it in there, but remove the salary from it?
Correct.
Okay, we'll just make a note of that, so we'll have that when we, see that, a budget reduction.
There you go.
So, we can't pay you for that, and then remove the salary for superintendent? No, doesn't balance out too well.
Yeah, what was the question?
I'm joking, you're doing a ver, you're doing a very fine job. Never had any disappointment in any of the work that you've done. But moving right along, let's do Conservation, 171, we're all, are we doing, Mr. Ferry?
Have a good night, thank you.
Very much, coming in.
I did not receive an updated copy of their budget, so last meeting, you had level funded, I just kinda stuck figures in there, and, um, we can just hold that, because I still do not have their request.
But they were supposed to give it to us.
Yes.
I don't mind voting on the level funding, quite frankly.
My concern is just getting a response at this point, so, um, I suspect if they had, I, let me back up, not speaking about the Conservation Commission, speaking in general, I would think that if a board or commission or committee had anticipated some, uh, increased expenditure, that they would submit a budget, so, um, I don't think that we've had this on the agenda for two weeks, so I don't think that it's bad to act on this, uh, tonight.
Okay, I will entertain a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Department Budget Account 171, Conservation Commission, as presented this evening in the Town Administrator's level funded version.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, the ayes have it. 210, please, Department.
This is one of our larger, obviously, uh, larger ones, so the salary line you may wanna hold, just because, uh, the, the salary for the chief, because that wraps into the same discussion. Um, the police unit contract has been negotiated, so these salaries reflect that increase, that anticipated increase. The, um, administrative assistant, there has been discussion about increasing their hours, but her hours, but I do not have, um, it says thirty-two hours there, but I believe the figure includes, um, let me just make sure I'm looking at the right one, I should do what you do with the ruler. So, uh, there has been discussion about increasing her hours, this figure does not include the increased hour, um, amount, so if the chief comes back and asks for that, I just kinda wanna throw that into the conversation. Um, the overtime officers, he had originally provided a figure of, uh, almost three hundred thousand, I asked him to reduce that, because, uh, to me, it was high, so he did bring that down to two seventy-five. I still believe there might be some wiggle room, um, there, but we don't have to make that decision right now. And then, um, we have potentially officers that could retire, so that's still carried over, and he made some changes. Um, one of note that we have to make a decision about, I think, is the building repairs and maintenance line, and that is going up a sizable amount, as you can see, and that is to put in, like, landscaping type work, and, um, the talk of irrigation. I don't personally think we should be doing that.
What's, excuse me, what's it for?
Landscaping, the outside, and, and irrigation, and my thought is, why wouldn't you get the same kind of landscaping that we get, which is the highway department? Like, why special landscaping is needed, is, I don't get it.
What do they want landscaped? It is landscaped. Oh, there was-
Like, maintenance, I'm sorry, like, maintenance, uh, like, getting a lawnmower over there. Well, why wouldn't we just use our own facilities, and our own department staff?
So, if this pass yet, we've used the highway department, right?
Highway, no, because, uh, we were still under the, uh, control of the contract, and that was Teescape, they did a lovely job, then we had a car accident, and then it's going to be redone, based upon-
Don't we, there was a car accident-
There was.
That impacted the building, the, the premises.
Yes, and, um, messed up that landscaping, so, uh, that's to be, and then we put in the guardrail, so he's coming back to Lomond Seed, because they've settled, so we really haven't taken over this, um, bit, but I was just surprised to see that. Um, I don't, I don't know, like, the chief's not here to be able to provide his input there, and then same goes for irrigation, uh-
I'm not in favor of that.
What would be, um, so, forget landscaping, and it'll be, I'll say it'll be done in-house, forget water sprinkling, what would be a reasonable number for just a number, in case something has to be done, a minimal number for building maintenance, whatever, or grounds, you know?
So, that's my other question, um, I apologize, I'm gonna answer your question with a question. We had a collective decision to move a lot of this, these types of expenditures into Budget 192, which is town buildings, public properties, so why we would keep this large sum here in the Police Department budget, when we're actively working out of 192, goes again, is counterintuitive to me, and goes against what we've been-
I'm only looking at the first three columns that have the small amounts.
Yes.
And you need to have a small amount in there, that's what I'm asking.
So, they, yes, I mean, I think to err on the side of safety, yes, keep it level funded at two thousand, and then if we need to increase 192 for whatever reason, I know that there are some special things going on in that building, it's high energy efficient, um, high energy efficient doesn't make sense, it's energy efficient with an HVAC system that's fairly sophisticated, and does require, um, some routine maintenance that the building department is currently taking care of, um, so I think it's more appropriate to be in 192, and you could leave two thousand dollars here for incidentals, there's camera equipment that we wouldn't be touching, um, there's sophisticated technology that we wouldn't be touching, I don't know if we wanna even increase it based upon that, but as far as a massive increase for landscaping and irrigation-
My thought about the landscaping, is, as I said, um, I think for, uh, going into the new year, because we'll have a meeting in the fall, if in fact, it's decided something is needed, and money can be considered, but I think going into the new year, we finish up this year, and we go into the July 1st year, in-house, as is, on mowing grass, or trimming shrubs, or whatever, um, and the garden club might want to plant some things near the fence, because we talked about having a planting that would might hide problems, but anyhow, that's one thing. But my other thought is, irrigation, well, first of all, we know that the water district has a ban on, year after year, and people are told about watering-
Watering and, and, yeah.
And in all honesty, I think that, um, a sprinkler system for one department is not appropriate. In all honesty, if we were considering a sprinkler system for any town property, the only one I would support is the Veterans Park, and even that one would be shut down in a water ban, and I'm not even proposing we do that.
Right.
But, um, I, I really think to put in a sprinkler system, we're sending the wrong message to people in town-
I agree.
That have those systems, and are told lawn and even, or hose only, and-
Right.
That's my personal view.
I guess, my concern was just the, just frankly speaking, was the increase over prior years, um, the police station has been there for almost two, yeah, a year, almost two years.
They've been in it for a year.
Yeah.
The open house is January 2019, right?
Yeah, so-
No, no, they, uh, it was March, or-
Correct.
March 2019. They moved in in February.
But they had been in, you are correct, they had been in before that, uh, a month or two.
I actually thought the open house was, you're right, you're probably right.
So, my-
It's all a blur, it's all a blur.
So, I have no issue with them, perhaps, uh, needing to, and I say them, I mean that facility, uh, needing, maybe they wanna do mulch, I, I don't know exactly what the highway does, if they do beyond, uh, mowing of the lawn, so maybe they wanted to change the landscape, so I'm okay with it being more than what it was prior, but I, I do have, I hesitate for two reasons. One, I do think, to Selectmen's point, the garden club can help, if they were, I don't know what the intention is, um, if they were wanting to do plants, or shrubs, or flowers, perhaps.
Even an eagle spell, even an eagle spell project.
Correct.
Well, and also, my point is more, we have a whole separate budget for facilities, that we can tap into for mulch, we can tap into-
But I guess my point was, maybe, instead of funding this line in this budget, uh, add a little bit more than what it was next year, maybe we could add more into that-
Facility, the 192.
Correct, anticipating, maybe the, the police department or the police station will need some, uh, landscaping outside of the expertise or purview of the highway department, so I, I don't even know what that would be called.
Which I said, but, that's right.
More than, more than mowing lawn.
And that, that is something that was discussed, I know that, because the type of tree, I remember this, because Mr. McGee came in telling me that there are, you know, spots, like, open spots that needed to be reseeded, and just sometimes it doesn't work, and there was talk about drainage, and how things were getting washed out, so I know that over the last year, we've experienced some things that were a little extra, um, so, I, but I just want them to know, like, there's a budget for that, like, we can take care of that. My recommendation here would be about five thousand dollars, because of the camera equipment and the technology, um, that they use to operate the facility. And that even to me is conservative, in the sense of allowing a little cushion.
A total of five?
Instead of the twenty-five, to put in five.
And I'm okay with that, my, and, and I'm okay with the increase. My concern, as a selectman, was just, the increase, as it was presented this evening, was almost two thousand dollars a month, you know, if you do the math in that way, so twenty-three thousand, so, um, five thousand, that's, that's totally fine. I have no, I have no issue, I, I think what they're trying to do is, and again, I'm, I really do not have insight, but I think they're trying to put something in that wasn't, that will alter the landscape, in terms of plantings, or, I don't know, mulch work, or some, something like that, perhaps, so, and I'm okay with that. It is a beautiful property, and it, and it should be showcased.
And it should stay there that way.
Correct, correct.
So, the building repairs and maintenance should also say, building slash grounds repairs maintenance, it's kind of, it's all in there, building grounds, all as a package, is that what we're saying?
Well, I know there's another number for grounds, and it's in 192, but, that, I mean, point made.
Maybe we could like a building slash grounds repair and maintenance.
I mean, I just wrote that in, so I can easily change that.
We use that as generic language. Okay, so, we're gonna reduce, excuse me, five-two-five-zero, okay, but my question for that is-
Sorry, there we go.
When they go to, when, excuse me, I keep using generalities, when this department goes to do that landscaping work, or needs that work done, are they using five-two-five-oh, or are they using?
Budget 192 is our, our public buildings. I mean, that's really the point I'm trying to make. If they have something that needs to be done to the building, just like any other building, we go to 192 and have it done.
So, what you're proposing, 'cause I'm just trying to understand what, what we're talking about, so we're gonna level fund five-two-five-oh, and put the five thousand in 192?
No, I'm, I'm proposing to put this at five thousand, because they do have specialized equipment, like cameras and other technologically advanced things, that we wouldn't necessarily pay for, because it's just for them, but-
But the landscaping work will come out of?
Right, but we're, we're adequately, in my opinion, we're adequately-
So, we don't need to-
Funded there, we don't need to transfer this money request into that money, into that budget request.
So, your recommendation is, um, an additional three thousand, making a total of five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
So, instead of increasing this budget, twenty-three thousand, we're gonna increase at three thousand.
On that line?
Correct, on that line, yeah.
Two thousand, we're gonna go to five thousand.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, we're going to not address fifty-one oh zero five.
Right.
Uh, but-
Or fifty-one ten, right?
Yes, well, yeah, I'd like the chief to kinda weigh in on that, but she's also clerical, so for the same reasons, you do need to hold it.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the proposed Police Department budget, with the exception of line five-one-zero-five, five-one-one-zero, which we will revisit with a reduction in line five-two-five-zero, so that, that will now read five thousand dollars total requested for FY twenty-one.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you for bearing with me for that.
Communication Department, two fifteen.
Okay, I have lots of notes on this. No, I don't. So, he has a sizable increase in the salary operators full-time, uh, in his request, and that is to add for an additional daytime dispatcher, so there would be two folks on in the Communication Dispatch Center. It does not include a proposed percentage increase, based upon a, an agreement to the collective bargaining agreement, so just so you are aware of that. And then, um, they've made some changes, because the chief is considering altering their schedule, um, instead of what they're operating now would be a four and two, similar to the police.
I have a concern about the chief's stipend.
Oh, yes.
Has there been a substantial increase, a request for an increase?
Yes. You may wanna hold that longer.
It used to be seven thousand, fiscal year twenty, and now it's gonna go up to ten thousand four hundred and forty, an increase of forty-nine percent plus. So, I, I'm not a big fan of that.
Has, has there been a significant change in duties? I'm not aware of-
Neither.
So, to Selectman Gulat's point, one of the things that I use as a framework, when we were discussing things like, um, increases, um, was whether or not duties had changed, and I, I stuck firm to that last time, um, meaning, I would only entertain an increase if someone's, uh, duties had significantly changed. So, I guess the thing that I would like to know, before I were to approve this, is just, have those duties changed? Is it number of personnel, is it the nature of that position overseeing the communications, uh, team as the chief of police? So, I just, I guess I just want to know that before I would feel comfortable, um, voting on that.
These salary lines, this contract is open, isn't it?
Yes.
So, we really can't vote, um, to approve these salaries, 'cause we haven't settled the contract yet.
Well, this says, um, you can, it, for, not for the stipend, but for the other ones, that's just, funds are in there to add one additional dispatcher during the day, but it does not include an anticipated increase. It's whatever this rate is this year, carried over. So, you could approve this, and then, once contract negotiations were finalized, and we went back to the fall, we would retroactively, uh, take care of that.
That makes sense.
And my remarks are not pertaining to the stipend.
Have, have, has the, there been a meeting yet, a negotiating meeting yet?
No, I'm, I'm a little concerned, so-
What's going on with the viruses and all that?
I had reached, I had seen the, um, unions, not the steward, the union rep, at an unrelated event, and he said, yep, we'll be reaching out, and he, he did, he reached out. My understanding is that there might be some change in the leadership on the executive team there, and they're still figuring that out. I have not heard anything, um, to be honest, I have other unions to start with, so I'll just focus on those that are ready. But, um, yeah, we, we had seemingly kinda reached out, I'm prepared. Selectmen DeGraffas is my selectman representative on that, and we've discussed and shared what we, you know, what our proposals would be, and we're just waiting for a meeting date.
So, line fifty-one oh five, the fifty-four thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars that we're looking at, that's for one full-time position?
At current rate, yes.
At the current rate, okay, so then we drop down, um, and that reduction is because you're eliminating a part-timer?
So, the idea is, you go down on your part-time needs, because you have an additional person full-time to work with.
Okay.
So, it's borrow, I don't wanna say borrowing, but moving some money around, so it's less of an impact.
Five, all right, so those first two lines are okay. Line five-one-one-nine, I think we said we wanted to hold on that one?
Yes.
And fifty-one thirty-one, is that, that would be proposed at the current rates? 'Cause we don't have new rates?
Yes. My understanding is that there's been no consideration on what a proposed rate may be.
Okay, so, um, there is one hole that I can see on this budget, line five-one-one-nine?
Yep.
Okay, so, is the rest of the budget okay?
The rest is level, minus one reduction in IMC software.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the budget for the Communications Department, as submitted, with a, with the exception of line five-one-one-nine, uh, where we need more information.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I may very well support by, uh, Budget Line five-one-one-nine, but again, I just, I need, I have a couple questions, so I just want the answers before I vote in either way, that's all.
Technically, it should be held anyway, because you're-
Because it hasn't been resolved.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Next budget item is two twenty-five.
Okay. The same may be said for the salary for the chief, because of, um, our conversations, the union contract has been settled, and, um, there's an increase there. I'm gonna double-check this figure. It's hard to get a good, accurate representation of percentages, because they're split two ways, um, but I'll just verify that. I'm sure they're right, because the chief operates off a payroll sheet, um, that accounting gives him. No, no major increases, um, other than taking a peek at salaries for verification.
Any discussion?
Yes, uh, oh, I'm sorry, so I can-
No, go ahead.
I just had a quick question, uh, I'm not sure, it, it's not anything that I'm going to, um, not vote for this budget for, but I did have a question, I guess for you, Madam Administrator, for line five-one-three-two, and you may have mentioned this, and I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Why the ten percent increase to the overtime slash additional holiday pay line?
So, that would be because, well, in the new contract, there's an added four hours for Christmas Eve, not a huge deal, but you also have, um, I think about three, three people entered into extra vacation, I think it's three. Not extra vacation, I shouldn't phrase it more, they earn more vacation because of their years served. And then, um, where you have an increase in pay, you, you compound the overtime line, because you absorb that increase.
Thank you.
So, you have a handful of things going on.
So, is the only line that we're holding on is fifty-one oh five, because this person is on the, on the revaluations, just like we did with the-
Right, I believe so, yeah.
Highway Superintendent.
The, uh, full-time billing administrative assistant, he put in a two percent raise, that is an anticipation, she's a clerical, and, um-
What line is that?
That is fifty-one-one-five.
If they fall under that-
She's a, she's a clerical.
So, fifty-one oh five and five-one-one-five, let's say, uh, holds? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Department Budget Account two-two-zero-fire Department, with the exceptions, uh, of holding lines five-one-zero-five and five-one-one-five, as prepared this evening.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Two-three-one, ambulance services.
This is, um, almost identical, so-
Same situation with fifty-one oh-
Yes.
Zero five.
And fifty-one-one-five.
So, Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion, if we don't have, uh, any questions on this one, we will basically make the same motion, in terms of holding fifty-one oh five and fifty-one-one-five, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Waiting for questions.
Are there any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Department Budget Account two-thirty-one ambulance services, as prepared this evening, holding lines five-one-zero-five and five-one-one-five.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Next, uh, budget item is six hundred, sewer.
Uh, we tackled this budget slightly differently, because it's an enterprise fund, um, the, let's see, let me just pick these out. Fifty-one-one-zero and fifty-one-one-five are clerical union employees, um, and there is a step increase there to consider, as they've noted, thank you for noting that, um, sewer commission.
Question about that, Madam Administrator.
Yes, yep.
So, for fifty-one-one-five, it's a proposed one-point-five-three percent increase from last fiscal year's total request, but it should be a two percent increase, so how come that's not a two percent?
Can I guess? It has something to do with the number of days, so last year was fifty-two, plus a Monday and Tuesday, this is, I've been doing fifty-two and a half, because it's, it's three days. They might have a schedule where they're not working, but we can verify.
Thank you.
Um, my plan is to verify all salaries, because, um, some people put in the fifty-two and a half, some people don't. We did issue some payroll forms this year, um, in an attempt to see what people were calculating, and so we can take a peek at those and see exactly what was going on with their figures.
Thank you.
And then you can also, if it's, if the figure for FY twenty is overestimated, then it will mess with the percentage increase for this FY twenty-one budget, so, there's some things to examine there.
You have to adjust both?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we'll verify.
So, but we haven't been given people increases on the stipends, though, right? So, this shows that-
I think you have fallen suit with the, with the Finance Committee's efforts, yeah, of not doing that.
This is reflecting the two percent for the chair and two percent for the members?
Yes.
A total of a hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-two cents.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna recommend that we not send that percentage increase as part of our recommendation to the Finance Committee, in conjunction with how we have acted on other boards', uh, salaries as well. So, to the public, that means we have not approved, or recommended the approval of two percent increases for any, uh, board, to my knowledge.
Okay, so that's my fifty-one oh one and fifty-one oh two?
Mm-hmm.
Will be funded at the current rate, plus any additional days that may be in this year, is that what we understand?
No, because they don't get, this is just-
They might be paid monthly.
This is just stipend, right.
Yes, some are monthly.
Yeah.
Oh, all right, so, level funded, um-
Level.
Payments or whatever.
Yep, yeah.
No percentage increase on lines fifty-one oh one and fifty-one oh two?
So, we'll make the motion, if we have no questions, and then in the motion, we will say, level funding fifty-one oh one and fifty-one oh two?
Okay, line fifty-two eleven, we need to look at the new rates that are gonna kick in, in April, so that'd be for the next, I mean, it's gonna start in this count, in this fiscal year, but, um, whatever the number of kilowatt-hours worth to calculate this number, we need to use that lower rate, we just got with nine-point-something from, uh, Constellation Energy.
But if it's, if we assume it's gonna be lower than what it was last year, right?
It should go down.
Okay.
Yes.
And then that money would, okay, I understand.
So, yeah, so, I think we need to calculate the electricity rate on line fifty-two eleven, based on whatever they're estimating for kilowatt-hours, 'cause we know the rate has decreased, so I'm expecting some kind of a decrease, um, on line fifty-two eleven, unless there's a really substantial increase in kilowatt-hours, but I don't think that would be the case.
Judging off of what they paid, it should be around fifteen. But, I mean, it's not like an exact science, I just took, up until this thing.
Because electricity use goes up in January, February, so-
Exactly, yeah.
That's half a year, and it may not be just up on-
Reflecting.
But whatever they based this estimate on, if it's average kilowatt-hours for the entire year divided by twelve, then that, those total hours times the new rate would be a better number, I think.
Hmm.
And it starts April, right? April it starts?
Yes, it starts in April, which is in this fiscal year, but it's certainly gonna be here for the next fiscal year, it'll be two years, it's not a bad-
Exactly, June, twenty-twenty-two, December twenty-twenty-two, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's out there, yeah, so that's a little bit of savings.
Okay, so, recalculate.
So, do you wanna hold off on that, or should we go back?
Well, they, they are saying usage increase, and I wonder what, what are they increasing their usage with? Maybe they're anticipating Bristol, um, Bristol County, the sewer pump?
Oh, okay, yeah.
I don't know.
So, what I think we should do is, um, uh, excuse me, vote on this budget, and then we will hold fifty-one oh one, excuse me, no, we will hold fifty-two eleven.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Is that okay with everyone?
It's okay with me, all right.
And, and the, uh, the fifty-one oh one and fifty-one oh two do not-
Level funded, yes.
Exactly.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, if you're entertaining motions, uh-
I am.
I motion that we approve, or recommend for approval to the Finance Committee, Department Budget Account six-zero-zero, sewer enterprise fund, as- as presented with lines fifty one oh one and fifty one oh two level funded and holding line fifty two eleven until we obtain further information regarding the rate.
Second. All those, yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. The library six ten, did we get a new copy of that? I guess we didn't get the totals before, did we?
Wait, what, what was that?
Six ten library, we didn't get the, we didn't get the totals, so we held off to get the total amount.
Sorry, I don't have the total. I missed that.
Totals for, I'm sorry.
Your expenses and then everything together are not included. Generally, you have that final number.
Oh, yeah.
So that you can adequately compare. I mean, we have more budget work, you can put this off if you'd like.
I don't see any harm, yeah, putting it off.
Now, Mister Chairman, I'll make the motion that we table action on six ten library to a future meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Six thirty Parks and Recreation.
He has a little note for you. Many of their plans have obviously changed based upon our current landscape.
Um, I guess one question I have, and perhaps you can answer it, Madam Administrator, was I know there was an, um, plan for replacing equipment at the North Dyton Playground. And do you know if the Parks and Recreation Commission had decided to, if additional funds were needed, and I'm sure they are, to, it's a whole park that they need to replace essentially. Are they, they're not gonna put the monies into the budget to expend it? They're going to do a warrant article?
CPC, yes. So they have some funds set aside for fencing and, I think, electricity for North Dyton Playground. And then they were going to continue the rest of it in this coming FY twenty-one at town meeting with some more CPC funds. There was some allocation issues for last year. So they did as much as they could with the North Dyton Playground and then are going to focus on it for this coming town meeting in a warrant article through CPC funds.
That's good news. I do have one thing I would like to say to my colleagues and to our town administrator and hopefully to the Parks and Recreation Commission as well. I really wanna emphasize the need, especially with the previous issues at the North Dyton Playground where the equipment was ruined, vandalized, which is unfortunate because the equipment isn't, is expensive. And based on our notes that we have from the Parks and Recreation Commission, it looks like the equipment is even more expensive now. And that equipment was originally damaged several years ago. So it's, it's just very expensive equipment. And I would hope that the Parks and Recreation Commission would think about, and I'm happy to support installing security, purchasing and installing security cameras. I, I don't know the logistics of how that would work. I don't know the logistics of if it would be recorded, et cetera. We'll leave that up to them. But I think it might be a good idea that we look into that so we're protecting our investment. It's unfortunate when equipment gets vandalized and then nobody has any idea who does it cause it's not cheap to replace.
Also, be careful of the legality of something like that because you.
Yeah, there are issues that.
Privacy issues and stuff like that, so. Maybe, you know, if they went on after hours, if there's such a thing.
Well, you'd have to be incredibly careful because most of our playgrounds are in residential areas, which I think is great. As a person living, that's great. But you cannot point a camera in a certain area into someone's private. So there's quite a few trials and tribulations and challenges in doing something like that.
I do understand.
But yeah, that, it makes sense. Well, and it's sad. And, you know, a lot, we had the, it was a special swing that was continually getting ruined and it was over here. And then there's, just please don't ruin playground equipment. It's there for a reason, people really like it. And it's expensive to fix, and we want nice facilities for our community.
And they shouldn't be using it right now.
That's right.
Correct.
Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve Department six thirty Parks and Recreation as admitted.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. And agricultural commi, committee is the last page, Elliot.
Yes, uh, so this budget is, so I am a non-voting member, associate member of the Agricultural Commission. I did not vote on this budget, A, because I can't, and B, because I didn't. So it's before you. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have as best as I can.
So how do they come up the townwide mailing that figure? So specific eight forty-one, so they've checked with the printing company? And that's the figure that they came up with? And that's kind of B for July first or after July first?
With DeVall, correct, yeah. Also, we don't have, excuse me, not we. The Agricultural Commission doesn't have to use DeVall, they're just the closest proximity to the town. And I think that's why, that's why.
Yeah, probably a good idea to get a price from the man that, company that Mrs. Brady uses for the warrants. Because it's, it's, it's mail, it's everything, postage and everything. You just give them everything.
That's a good point.
What does it mean to enable committee to table at events in this list? What is that?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, could be phrased a little better. I think it's to set up, you know, similar to what the Saltwater Committee does.
Like what you did, yeah. You're following in your footsteps.
It's not a verb to table, it looks like a verb in that sentence. It just means to have a setup. What is the word I'm looking for?
A booth or something, yeah.
A booth, thank you, thank you.
So we don't already have a table, for example, that they could use?
I don't think the commission wanted to be presumptuous.
Lions Club, well, I don't know if it's Lions Club. When I'm at the two festivals that I go to, when I get there, they say, here's your spot and it's set up. I don't know if the fairing brings up something for me to use, I'm not sure. All I know is we don't have equipment that we put out there.
But this isn't an outrageous.
Oh, no, it's not, I didn't know what it was.
So I, oh, I'm sorry.
So the gardeners supplies, is that for the community garden? Is that what they're talking about?
And that, so I wanna be clear for people. There has been an overwhelming response from residents who want to volunteer with the community garden. The reason why there's monies here to establish and maintain the community garden is simply because at this time, I don't think it's known since we cannot have a meeting due to the, um, the public health situation. We don't know what could be donated. I, there are people who have stated they wanted to donate equipment and supplies. But there's also, after speaking with John Gray, who is a sustainable farmer, there's things that I didn't necessarily think about. For example, like having a big water jug near, in close proximity to the community garden. Those are, I'm sorry, I was gonna touch my face, so I caught myself, thank you. Those were.
We're socially distant and socially aware.
Those were things that I hadn't thought of. Once the situation improves in terms of public health, we will have a meeting, we will have a better idea. We have a volunteer list, we'll have an idea of who is gonna contribute what. And I suspect we won't end up needing as much as what was requested. But this is just to get it established. And the other thing I'm thinking is, once we have a better idea of who's gonna volunteer what and who, instead of volunteering hours, wants to volunteer or donate supplies, the cost to maintain it will go down as well. Because then we would be more reliant on those donations and supplies rather than setting it up, which is a cost. Cause some of the infrastructure just is not present, like a gigantic water jug, for example. And so I suspect that that line will not either be in future budgets or will not be what it is in this one.
I was going to, if you approve this this evening or recommend this, I was going to work with the town accountant to provide a number, you don't have a number here, for what this would be. And then we would probably split this up into lines called communication, professional technical, replacement slash equipment, things like that. So I would kind of work with you to put correct sums in.
Yes.
So, but it wouldn't exceed the twenty-five fifteen total unless you voted something differently. So I just wanted you to know that.
That's actually a question, right?
Oh, perfect.
So when the Green Communities Committee needed funds, and I think there was another, the Trails Committee, yes, also.
In one twenty-two.
Correct, so they'll be under the purview of the board. So when they go to purchase whatever they need to purchase for the Trails, that would come before this board. Is the reason why this Agricultural Commission budget would get its own number? Because people at a town meeting had voted to create the commission? And then they have the authority? I guess what I'm asking is, let me back up in a roundabout way. I'm gonna back up in a direct way and stop on roundabout.
Withdraw all that free stuff.
Yeah.
Strike, strike pass.
I guess, does the Agricultural Commission, I caught, I'm sorry, do they have the authority to expend funds? Because.
I don't know, we'll find out.
Yeah.
So if you want to place this.
Should this be under the Board of Selectmen's purview? Because nothing in the state law that, that allows towns to create agriculture commissions says anything about monies that I can recall.
So we, I hate bringing up Westbridge Road all the time, but we did have an agricultural commission and they did expend funds. They did the signage, down here it's much better, much more quaint and fitting. And they did pay for that through their own funds. I don't remember if it was like a special article. But I think if you went forward and requested your own budget, town meeting would then authorize the Agricultural Commission to expend that.
I just wanna make sure we're doing it.
Yeah.
It's not, it's, it's, it's a commission, it's been approved, it's been, it has been, appointments have been made. And just like the Conservation Commission, you can request funding. And if it passes a town meeting, you're gonna get your own department number. It's not like the Trails, that's a committee.
Exactly.
And not only that, the.
It's ad hoc.
It's, it's a different, totally different setup. Whereas you will be having, when I say you, I mean Agricultural Commission, number one, is going to have to hold hearings if there are cases brought in for them. So there's a function beyond just talking about the community garden.
They have, they have statutory authority. You, you have a role, you've been, you've been created, similar to the ADA Commission. It's been created at town meeting. So that gives it a little bit more of a robust function. Dyton Trails Committee, I refer to as ad hoc, it was a creation of a vote of this board. So there's a little bit of a.
Thank you.
You're welcome, no problem.
Since I've asked that this be the community garden, the organic, the Agricultural Commission might wanna consider getting some free manure from the culture festival. Might be very close to the.
Well, what I was thinking is walking from the table we have set up to the field to obtain the samples for future uses.
Hopefully.
You can add it, you don't need to save it in a big bucket.
Oh, my gosh.
You do have to.
I hope we can have it.
You don't want anything left on the field.
Yeah, but to your point, Chairman Pacheco, I know we're laughing, but it is a good point. And we have not had that meeting. It will be on the agenda for that volunteer meeting to discuss having things be organic. And, and I think that that is a, that is a really timely thing, so I totally support it.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Agricultural Commission budget request as presented.
For a second. I'll step down and second that.
I'm still gonna abstain. I'm a non-voting member, I didn't vote for it on the ag com button.
I stepped down and seconded that motion. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, the ayes have it. Is there any selectmen reports?
I will mention, did you get the email that I sent that had the word sheets? There were two word sheets from the business manager at the school with some scribbles on them. Potential reductions that came out of the last budget meeting they had.
I don't remember seeing it. That being said, I have tons of email about coronavirus and I could've missed it. So I will search again.
Yes, we're not discussing that budget.
Okay.
But I'll look back and see when I sent it. Because we had meetings back to back, I was unable to attend the school committee meeting and then the meeting with the Rehoboth Selectmen. It came out of the school committee meeting, cause I did, I did watch the meeting on TV. And the business manager had some budget sheets with his scribbling on them. And he had made during that school committee meeting recommendations to eliminate some positions. One of the things they mentioned was, the incoming freshman class has dropped considerably because of the number of students going to N B P. And, and there was a discussion about, and it was a good discussion. We aren't losing D R students to those schools. Students are opting to go there because of what is being offered that we don't offer. And we're not in competition. And I know that in the past, there's been some contention, but it was a good, that was a good discussion. So they didn't vote any, take specific action. They listened, they discussed it, and there was some parental input and there was input from staff. The next night, which was the Rehoboth FinCon and Selectmen having a meeting. I haven't seen that one, I understand there's a way to watch it on something. But from what I got from Mrs. McBride, who's on our advisory committee, she's the one who forwarded the sheets to me. So we have not met, we don't have any meeting scheduled. We're waiting to find out if the public hearing on the budget was going to take place. I believe the superintendent asked if we were going to have a recommendation, but we haven't got the Dyton side, we can't make a recommendation on just one town's information. The other thing I heard from that school committee meeting was that the estimated total amount of money that Rehoboth will have available, and I think it's for education, is somewhere between six hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars. It includes all education, not just the regional district. So I think it's their best guess on what may be available from state aid. And I think they use a sixty-five thirty-five split, sixty-five percent school. So that was the only additional information I had. But really no decisions were made. And if that meeting takes place, that public hearing takes place, I intend to go as do some of our other committee members just to be in the discussion, but.
Thank you.
That email was sent on March fourteenth.
Oh, so you did, okay, all right.
March fourteenth.
Thank you.
It's just information.
I don't hear any data, you've, I've been sending you, I know you've been very busy.
Nothing to make a decision on, but I would just say print it and, I, this is my D R stuff and I'll just stick it in there to see what happens.
That's what I do with this, is my budget book.
Yeah.
The black book.
I do have a semi-report. I had received a lot of questions about the tenth annual or eleventh annual Easter egg hunt. I did reach out to the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission at the end of last week or perhaps over the weekend. He had said, I believe that the Parks and Recreation Commission was going to meet this week to decide what to do with the Easter egg hunt. And that was the last I had heard of it, I don't know if anyone else.
So his meeting was scheduled for, I believe, yesterday. And he canceled it because of everything that's going on.
The meeting.
The meeting. I believe they are gonna cancel the Easter egg hunt just because you can't.
I saw, I saw something.
Yeah, they've canceled it. So it wasn't in the agenda, it was in your.
Announcements.
Your written remarks there.
Oh, okay.
So they are canceling that unfortunately. He wants to reschedule. I think we, same goes for the Medal of Honor Ceremony. We very much want to reschedule and when it is safe to do so, we likely will. The chairman made a funny remark, but it's true. Who cares if they're picking up Easter eggs in July? It's just supposed to be fun. So we have the stuff, we have the items to do it. Yeah, unless it's chocolate, that's true. So why not? But we, the goal is to reschedule, we're just not gonna invite a bunch of people out.
That Santa's Day will be this summer.
Yeah.
For the, all the, you know, the people that really enjoy that.
Holiday.
That particular day and, and everything that goes with it.
Whatever date they pick for the Easter egg hunt, we might wanna think as a, a board that given this whole thing is shutting down and everybody not being able to communicate and talk to each other, having some kind of a Dyton Day or something.
Oh, I love that idea.
That would be nice.
Get everybody together and thank them for their support and all the things they've done during this pandemic.
What a great idea.
That is a good idea.
The, the fire department was gonna, in a good, in a good way. The fire department's gonna have an open house and they canceled that as well. So we did have quite a few events going on. We're happening town, but I left. We're happening in town, but I love that idea, I think that's great.
I think the only thing we've got to hang in our calendar was the Stormwater Committee meeting at the end of the month. And I was contacted by Danica Warnes from Audubon Society because they were working with CIRPA, and they had requested a bylaw so that they could make a presentation and whatever. But that's also, we were supposed to hear from Strawberry Fields. But all those events are off too, so I'm thinking this is gonna get canceled. And I'll ask for, but don't see it going forward. And she needs at least a minimum of twenty minutes, and this meeting would just be too long.
Right.
You know, so I think that's probably going to be canceled too because, you know, we won't have any info on Strawberry Fields, so...
These are trying times.
I will say that Mr. Ferry and I, as I said earlier, we did complete all of the appointments we had made. None of the people that were property owners that came in wanted to change. And the next step is, all, everyone accepted what is offered. One party is going to donate the easement we need. I'm gonna prepare the paperwork, I'm just waiting for some W9s to come in so I can put it all together and give it to the town accountant. So the plan is, pay the people for the easements that have all been negotiated. I've got, I'm guessing somewhere between six and eight people that are left. When it's safe to do so, and when I can actually contact them and get a response, we'll set up meetings again. But that, this way we'll get this bunch done. It won't be holding up, Mr. Ferry, he's looking at possibly July for the contractor to start the work. So that's where we are with the Sidewalk Complete Streets project.
Thank you. There are no correspondence or acknowledgements minutes, except for review of the minutes for the regular meeting, Selectmen's meeting of March eleventh, twenty twenty.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, except for review the minutes of the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of March eleventh, twenty twenty.
For a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes for the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting of February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Approval of the warrants, warrant stated March eighteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrant stated March eighteenth be approved. Warrant thirty-eight A dash twenty in the amount of one hundred thousand, five hundred, thirty-seven dollars, sixty-eight cents payroll. Thirty-eight B dash twenty, the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars, seventy-four cents. Now, it's payable, be approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Any public input? No?
One day I'm gonna get like a fake skeleton and just like put it there.
Halloween, it'd be nice.
And get those things people put in their cars when they wanna use the H.O. screen.
I have a long skeleton that I bought that glows that night. We put it on a porch.
Put him in there.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Thank you, take care.
Stacy.